Alright, so we'll go ahead and open the planning.
Yeah, turn my mic on. Go ahead and open the planning commission meeting for June 15th at 6:30. We'll rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic which has changed, one nation under one individual, liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So go ahead and go over to Angela for our roll call commissioners. We don't need a roll. Oh, yes, we do. Sorry, never mind. As you just.
Oh. Um. Jamie Melcher, Commissioner Melcher and Commissioner Branson did call in. They're excused. I have not heard from Commissioner Wood yet.
Okay.
So then Henry Voltes.
Praise him.
Jeff Parker.
Here.
Eva Journey.
Present.
And Nancy White.
Present.
Yep. Four present, three absent. We have four.
Alright, so this is the portion in our meetings where we are open to public comment. So if anybody wishes to address us, and it looks like I have one here that would. So I would like to invite Katie forward to address the commission. Sorry, it's a little squidgy right there, isn't it? If you could, once you had a seat, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
So I'm Katie Vineyard. My address is 4309A Long Street here in Sweet Home. So I came in and was against the knotty pine off of 45th Avenue. My concerns were the water that's back there, which I do have a ditch right behind my house with a five-year-old and a three-year-old. They have a barrier up, if you want to call it that, that's maybe two feet tall. Um, until they get done building and doing everything. You also told me that I could contact code enforcement because they would take care of it when the property was not maintained. I started contacting code enforcement clear back the first part of May. It's been over six weeks ago that I've been contacting them, trying to get a hold of them, trying to get them to do something about it. And they have yet to do nothing about it. They keep saying, the first excuse I heard was as soon as it dries out, Cordell's gonna get somebody on it on a tractor. Okay? It's been dry for over five weeks now. It's bone dry. I've looked. There are cracks in the dirt back there, like it always gets every summer. And I contacted them again today, and I've contacted them weekly. Today I finally get, well, Tuesday I got a phone call saying that they were going to be out the end of this week or first of next week to mow it. That doesn't work when I go to pay my water bill. They want their money. So it's extremely frustrating when this planning commission told me contact code enforcement and code enforcement is not doing it on a timely manner. I can't get answers from them. Here's pictures from the other side of the fence of what I'm looking at. When I sit there, this is what I'm looking at. Now, I don't understand when you guys told me this, that they would take care of it, why I'm still looking at this over six weeks later. And I think that it's very important that you guys real, that you guys realize that you're approving these things. City's not following through. They're not getting things done on a timely manner, and I'm still looking at this.
Okay, well, we will, you know, as far as departments go, you are correct, code enforcement or.
That's, you guys told me that.
Yes, and that would be the way to go. We unfortunately are volunteer panel, and we do what we can to help things push through.
Well, I'm letting you guys know that when you're approving things.
Yes.
You're getting people from out of town that are coming in and then not maintaining stuff. And that your city that you're standing up for and approving this stuff for is not coming back and taking care of stuff, at least not in a timely manner. I've called countless different times and never gotten phone calls back too.
Well, I'm sorry that that's happened.
Well.
I really am because that is.
It's extremely frustrating.
Yeah, well, uh, you know, we'll put forth a note and I know that code enforcement is backed up. I personally have turned in some things that haven't been dealt with and I'm, I'm the same way.
When Ethan Rowe was at code enforcement, things were taken care of. So I don't know who they have now or what's going on or how he took care of things. Last year when I dealt with this, it was within three weeks. That it was done.
Do what we can. We'll pass this on. Um, I understand your frustration. I do.
Okay, well, before you guys approve more developments, especially by cordial construction, I really feel like you guys should take this into consideration.
We, we will take it into consideration, but unfortunately, our, our decision-making stops with the subdivision layout itself and beyond that. Out of our hands.
Okay, well.
But that is on record now, and if it continues to be a problem, I would suggest taking the next step to city council.
Okay, well, I guess I'll show up at a city council meeting.
They have more authority than we do when it comes to that stuff right there. I do know there have been some personnel changes as well in that department, so things are being shuffled. I'm not gonna say that's an excuse for it, but at the same.
It's no excuse. I also know from talking that the code enforcement guy has been out on maternity leave because they told me maternity leave, so we had to go around about that. Cause a male cannot have a baby. Uh. But especially this time of year when you've got grasses growing, there's no reason to not have somebody filling in or at least returning phone calls.
Well, we will take it into note. Thank you for coming down. I appreciate it. Okay, if there are no other public comment for the record, we will move on to our meeting minutes from the last meeting. There any changes or corrections that need to be made?
I have read them. I make a motion to accept them as written.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as written. Before I send this over to you, will it cause a problem? I will need to abstain as I was not here. So do we have a quorum to approve those meeting minutes?
To push them off to the next meeting.
Okay, so we will hold these over to the next meeting. We need to make a motion to hold those over to the next meeting, or can we just by point of order and just hold them over?
Thinking of declining.
Okay. Alright, we are declining the motion to hold it over. Alright, agreed. Alright, so we will move on for our public hearing, which is, looks like just one legislative amendment. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for LA 2302 at 6:37. This legislative amendment, LA, oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm right. Sorry, it's been a minute. Harriedly. This legislative amendment, LA 23-02 consists of revisions to the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.04, definition 17.06, City Comprehensive Plan and Establishment of Zones, 17.10 Residential Low Density Zone R1, 17.12 Residential Medium Density Zone R2, 17.14 Residential High Density Zone R3, excuse me, 17.16 Mixed Use Zone MU, 17.18 Commercial Central Zone C1, 17.20 Commercial Highway Zone C2, 17.22 Industrial Zone I, 17.24 Public Facilities Zone PF, 17.25 Recreational Commercial Zone RC, 17.26 Mixed Use Employment Zone MUE, 17.42 Street Standards, 17.44 Off-Street Parking and Loading, 17.50 Signs, 17.52 Fencing and Screening, 17.56 Yards and Lot Standards, 17.58 Land Division, 17.66 Manufactured Homes on Individual Lots, 17.70 Residential Accessory Structures, 17.72 Special, Special Residential Dwellings, 17.90 Application General, 17.108 Non-Conforming Uses, and 17.119 Vacation and Dedication of Public Ways. The proposed text amendments were identified by the city staff. So the applicable substantive criteria listed in the staff report, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. With those being read into record, do any of our commissioners have any personal bias in regards to this legislative amendment? I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
I also have none. Any ex parte information? No, I have none.
Although we're acquainted with so much of it.
Yes, yes, we do have a little bit of history, light reading anyway. So we'll head over to Angela for our staff report.
Anyone do this?
What's that?
Do we want to just repeat the highlighted?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are just gonna go through each of the highlighted portions and not read it all out if that is.
Sounds good.
So just by way of introduction.
Yeah, sorry.
This is kind of, you know, we passed this whole thing last fall. Inevitably, during our times going through everything, things get missed and things don't, we don't realize how they will affect us until we actually put them into practice. And so these, this is basically a whole bunch of corrections of areas where we found that either the code is not specific enough, or it contradicts itself, or there were items that were missed uh, that should have been included and weren't, et cetera. And so we've been collecting these essentially since you passed it.
Yeah.
And, and this is our, our kind of correction. And, and actually even since these have all been compiled and submitted, we have found a couple other areas that, that ideally need to be updated, but that is the nature of legislation. We find errors and we bring them back to see if other people agree that with us that they are actually errors and, and then correct them. So I think we'll go through each one in your packet. The highlighted in yellow portion is the only change. So we're not going to read through everything. We're just gonna read through the proposed changes.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna start with 17.04 definitions. Going slowly.
I can take the first one if you want.
Um. Yeah.
So on page 11 of your packet, page, it's, there's a new definition for adult-oriented use, which is defined as establishments that provide sexually oriented entertainment services or products. Such establishments exclude minors by virtue of age under the law of the state of Oregon, whether or not such minors are accompanied by a consenting adult guardian or spouse. Types of uses include but are not limited to adult motion picture theaters, video arcades, massage parlors, nude modeling studios, lotion studios, adult bookstores, adult paraphernalia shops, nude photography story, studios, or eating and drinking establishments that have sexually oriented entertainment, such as nude dancers, strippers, and other, or other similar entertainers. That's a new definition, one that we did not have before. Moving right along. A lot to scroll through.
Definitions as the watch.
Okay, the next one is that there was not a definition for pre-existing. And we found that necessary to, as we come across a lot of pre-existing uses. Pre-existing is defined as any use or structure existing before adoption of the current applicable provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code. Uh, next is the def, there's a new definition for storage area. It's on page 37 of your packet. Storage area is defined as a storage unit facility either enclosed within a structure or within a site obscuring fence and having one or more of the following: large storage units, small storage units, and/or covered or uncovered RV boat and commercial inventory storage. Okay, is that it for the, that's it for the definitions? Take the next one.
Yeah. Maybe. Alright, so 1706 City Comprehensive Plan and Establishment of Zones. Uh, we just had a couple errors in the classification zone table. We didn't, we don't have a residential mixed use. It's just called mixed use, the MU zone. Um, so we needed to remove that. We do not have a C3 commercial neighborhood zone. Um, so we removed that. The rest of it is, um, as we passed it. Um, the other part is the location of zones, city zoning map of, um, said 2003. It should have been 2022. Uh, zoning of annexed areas, we removed, um, continued to be zoned under the existing county zoning unless the area of a part of the area is, and then capitalized city, so. Just to clean it up. Some of this is also just to clean up some of the verbiage. And then 1710 Residential Low Density Zone. Um, we now have a middle housing criteria that we have to put into place. I think it's House Bill 458. I can't remember now all of a sudden. And that came about, um, another house bill, and it has to do with population, but it's where you can have a lot, and it'll explain further down in the special dwelling. But to simply explain it, you can have a lot that has a duplex on it, and they can then again divide the lot as long as the parent lot. Um, it fits all the criteria. So it's just a new uh, middle housing kind of standard to allow additional housing in there. So that's.
It allows the property owner to, it's required under state law, and it allows the property owner to divide a property that has a duplex on it so that each side of the duplex is a separate, um, a separate parcel and can be owned separately.
So I added that. So all of the chapters, so, um, K Lot Division for Middle Housing Subject to Provisions in Chapter 17.72, so it has its own criteria which we'll get to.
Angela, would you give us the page number and when you.
Oh, yeah.
So our page numbers are different than yours.
No, I have the packet.
Oh, you have the packet page.
Oh, yeah, it is, because they don't have the.
Which page numbers do they not have? Do you have the gray box?
No, like you, you said 11 and one. It was actually three in our packet.
Yeah, it's different on theirs.
Oh, I see. And.
Cause we're looking at them.
Yeah, and the page numbers are gonna be different for each.
Each section.
Section. So we'll, we'll have to use code, the code numbers.
Okay.
To specifically tell.
So the next one we're on is 17.12 Residential Medium Density Zone. And on page two of that one, um, same thing, uh, letter K Lot Division for Middle Housing Subject to Provisions of Chapter, in Chapter 17.72. And then on page. Oops, I just went too far.
Three.
Yeah, page three, um, we left out, so on the standards, a garage or carport, we left out carport. Um, rear yard, um, we originally wanted to, um, shorten that rear yard setback to allow for, um, more lot coverage, and we didn't do that. We left it at 15, so we're correcting that for 10. Um, and then there's, uh, some verbiage on C that we had before, um, regardless of the side rear yard requirements of the zone and accessory structure excluding detached accessory dwellings may be built to within five feet of the side or rear yard lot line, provided the structure is more than 70 feet from the street abutting the front yard and 20 feet from the street abutting the street side yard. This was included in a couple of the sections, just not all of them. So we put this back in. And then the former C, uh, we removed that one just for clarity. We looked at it and it just didn't make sense to how we do all of our setbacks. And then 17.14 Residential High Density Zone R3. Page two, again, um, we're adding in that Lot Division for Middle Housing Subject to the Provisions of Chapter 17.72, and then just a correction of 1714040. It had the wrong number on it. Uh, page three, we're just missing unless otherwise required by the development code, the following minimum dimensional standards shall be required for all development in the R3 zone. Um, and then also on, uh, B, on a flag lot, the inset front yard setback shall be a minimum of 10 feet. C, regardless of the side and rear yard requirements of the zone and accessory structure excluding detached accessory dwellings may be built within five feet or of the side or rear lot line, provided the structure is more than 70 feet from the street, abutting the front yard and 20 feet from the street, abutting the street side yard. You guys kept staying up. Just let me know if I'm whipping through this.
Please let us know if there are any questions as we go through this.
17.16 Mixed Use Zone MU. Uh, page one, G, uh, we added, um, retail establishments not including adult-oriented uses. Same thing for H, not including adult-oriented uses. Um, on page two, we added in the Lot Division for Middle Housing Subject to the Provisions of 17.72. Um, three, um, B, where a side near your, your rear yard is not required and a structure is not to be erected at the property line, it should be set back at least three feet from the property line. Um, A, off-street parking.
Yeah.
That is out of play in the C1 zone.
So it makes it so.
Where you can share a common wall.
Yeah, well, it's for when, if you don't have a common wall. So if you're going, if you're building two separate buildings, they can't be right. I mean, it's recommended that you put them three feet apart, so it would be six feet on each side.
Yeah.
Which is our typical set, setback from building to building. So if you go three feet on each side, it's the.
It, it just says if, if you're not building on the property line, so if you're not
Yeah.
sharing it, having a common wall, then you have to be at least three feet. And that way there's some space for someone to get in there and maintain.
Kind of like an all or nothing.
Right. I mean, the idea is that you don't want to have a foot gap there and have it be impossible for anybody to get in there to make any repairs or anything like that.
In case of fire or something. So.
I'll go ahead and continue while she's distracted. Um, so there's a change then for off-street parking. Previously, it said uses identified in the MU zone, MU zone shall comply with provisions in Chapter 17.44. We updated that to say all single-family attached homes shall require a garage or carport, and in addition, provide one hard surface parking space per unit. Other uses identified in the zone shall comply with the provisions in 17.44. Uh, essentially to make it comply with our other, um, the same rules that we have for, for, um, single-family attached homes in other area, in other zones.
So it's one off-street parking instead of two?
Uh, yes, in the mixed-use zone.
Okay.
Um, moving on is 17.18 Commercial Central Zone. Uh, under permitted uses, we had previously in our, in our previous code, we had allowed for, um, multifamily dwellings to be, uh, built in the commercial zones. And that was a, a, a good feature and really helpful. Um, and somehow it got left out. I think it was inadvertent, uh, not intended to be, to remove that from our code. And so here we're putting it back in under A of 17.18.020 permitted uses, A, duplexes, multifamily dwellings, and residential facilities, um, shut, subject to the requirements of the R3 zone. And then the remaining items are renumbered to, um, to comply.
Okay, cause it's been adjusted down.
And then in J, it, when it talks about commercial enterprises in this zone, we here have also, uh, J1, um, added the language not including adult-oriented uses to number one there.
Where would they be located?
That's handled later in the, in, uh, it essentially, i- it, it puts any adult-oriented use into the industrial zone and, um, not in any of the other zones.
Okay.
Um, similar in J5, under eating and drinking establishments, it also says not including adult-oriented uses. And then again, renumbering for K. Um, similar to the other zones in 17.18.030, uh, it adds under special uses, I Lot Division for Middle Housing Subject to the Provisions of Chapter 17.72. Um, I should totally take a break and, and comment a little bit on the adult-oriented uses, um, stuff added in. Um, discuss in, with staff and, uh, in the city manager's discussions with various council members, um, it was determined that we probably should have something in our code governing adult-oriented uses.
Absolutely.
And so we determined that, um, we didn't want to allow that in the, in the main commercial areas because of how visible those are all along Highway 20, and therefore we kind of determined that the industrial zone would probably be a more appropriate place for uses like that. And so, um, all of the, all of the commercial zones have that, um, language added of not including adult-oriented uses. We added the definition for adult-oriented uses, and then later you'll see in the industrial zone, it's, it gives that as a conditional use within that zone.
Okay.
Um. Still continuing in 17.18.040, it adds, uh, uh, J Open Storage Complying with SHMC 8.04.030. Essentially, um, we are trying to make this fit with some of our other rules on open storage, uh, when it comes to our code compliance efforts. Um, and 17.18.050 dimensional standards, uh, because we added multifamily back in, we're adding a minimum lot area for multifamily dwellings in this zone would be a 9,000 square foot for the whole parcel is the minimum size or a, a minimum of 1,500 square feet per unit. Um, so if you have a 3,000 square foot lot in the downtown area, you'd be able to have two units in a multifamily. Um, if it was bigger, you could add them, add more as, depending on the space you have. And then, um, all other, we add the word other to signify that any other development, there's, we don't have a minimum lot size. Right, that brings us to 17.20 Commercial Highway, uh, Zone. Take that one.
Sure. Um, on 1720, uh, Commercial Highway, same thing. We left out the duplexes, multifamily dwellings, and residential facilities. Um, so we added it back in um, and then readjusted the lettering. Um, in T, um, we, and we added, or we removed, um, storage area and put storage facility. Um, it made, uh, we have, it made the code a little more clear, um, cause storage area was a little, um.
Vague.
Yeah, it was vague, and so adding it that's a facility makes it, um, you know, more of a building type, and we wanted to make that clear. And then down in W, the commercial enterprise, which may be classified as belonging to one of the following use groups, uh, we included the not including adult-oriented uses in that chapter also. Um, same thing for number five, um, not including adult-oriented uses. Then 171003, or 20030, I Lot Divisions for Middle Housing Subject to the Provisions in Chapter 17.72. Um, H, um, we added the Open Storage Complying with Sweet Home Municipal Code 8.04030 again too, so that we comply with, uh, code compliance. And down in Dimensional Standards, again, we added back in the multifamily, uh, square feet per parcel and per unit, and then the other.
So coming up then 17.22 Industrial Zone I. Um, like I mentioned previously, under 17.22.040 Conditional Uses, we added, uh, F Adult Oriented Uses, and then renumbered, uh, the previous F to G. Um, and then in Development Standard, 17.22.060, we added I or Adult Oriented Uses. Says where allowed by conditional use, adult-oriented uses shall meet the following standards. One, an adult-oriented use shall not be established or expanded within 500 feet of any residential zone or use. And two, an adult-oriented use shall not be established or expanded within 500 feet of the property line of a church, school, or public park. Basically to give a buffer area.
Yeah, would any of those things be challenged?
Anything can be challenged. Whether it will or not, it, it's certainly possible. And, um, I would leave it to our city attorney to determine if that's something that we are running. And um, I would leave it to our city attorney to determine if that's uh, something that we are running a risk with. It does, i- it's, it's not a complete restriction. So there is. There are places in the city where you could completely go through the process and make this work. Um, and so we're, we're not forbidding it entirely. Um, but it is a, it is a significant restriction. I'll admit that. But I would leave it to the city attorney to um, look at our legal risk as a city.
Well, it's long, it's hour. Codes, we find it clear enough. So that's, like you said, you're, we're not banning it completely, but we are restricting where it can be. This seems to be pretty clear.
Yeah. And with this having been added in, well, you know, if someone came in and was actually looking at doing something like this, they'd have reference. And they would be limited. So hopefully they would know prior to purchasing a piece of property.
Exactly. That brings us to seventeen point two four public facility zone.
Seventeen two four zero five zero dimensional standards. Uh, we just added back in the header, the following dimensional standard shall be required for all development in the public facility zone. Um, we added in B minimum setback or front side or rear yard is not required and the structure is not erected at the property line. It shall be set back at least three feet from the property line. As with the other one. Excuse me. Uh, recreation, commercial zone. Um, we ended up having two seventeen point two sixes. So we had to make one seventeen point two five. So I corrected that all of the, the numbering on this one. Um, G, we added not including adult oriented uses. Special uses, we added I lot division for middle housing, subject to the provisions in chapter seventeen point seven, two. And then I went through and so our recreation, commercial zone, we it's carried over from the old one. However, we didn't update the actual um, criteria standards so to match. So I went through and corrected them so they would match the actual, you know, single family R one, R two. So that these all now match um, the actual criteria in the other zones. So we had just missed that when we were going through and doing this one. So um, they all match now. Um, but lot coverage requirements, um, B. Um, it was a minimum of five, total of thirteen. Now it's a minimum of five, total of twelve. Um, D, we added carport back in and just said garage. Uh, building coverage now is forty percent. Um, down under B, single family attached, uh, we added carport back in, um, building coverage is now sixty percent. Um, we added back in a carport or garage is required. And then down C multifamily dwellings, uh, we added back in carport and garage.
Good for that.
Seventeen point two six mixed use employment zone. Uh, we added in I seventeen two six oh three oh I lot division for middle housing, subject to the provisions in chapter seventeen point seven, two.
Oh, you know what?
What?
We should have, I should have added the not including adult oriented uses to the MU zone.
You want to do that now?
Yeah. So um, I should have included in this in seventeen point two six point zero two zero. B one. Um, I should have added not including adult oriented uses like the other commercial zones.
Right.
And then under B four for eating or drinking establishments, uh, the same should have added not including adult oriented uses. And so uh, my request to you would be to include that correction in your motion tonight, if that is um, something that you want to do.
Agreed.
So that was B one would be the first adult.
Yes.
Yes, seventeen point two six point zero two zero B one and B four.
You jump down to seventeen four two street standards. Just so y'all know, this is the first code that I've known like really well. It's the first one that came up multiple times when we first passed this. So I don't know, I don't know by heart, but I got a lot of practice with this one.
Yeah, it's on page three of that section.
Yeah. So unimproved streets. Um, we, speaking with our city attorney, Robert Snyder. We don't actually have non remonstrance agreements. They're called development agreements. So we had to change that to update them all. Um, conforming to the regulations in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen five eight oh five oh B two. Um, we also have a, um, it's not with this one. Um, but um, our attorney, um, Robert Snyder, he is updating um, some code in the administrative code that also mentions remonstrance agreement. So we're making sure that it all complies throughout.
Thanks.
And then seventeen four two zero five zero half street development improvements. Um, number two, we added when located on arterial or collector street, a design as designated in the city's adopted transportation system plan. So that's um, extension of roadways.
Yeah, these are, this is something we've dealt with a lot as we talk to developers. They want to know when they have to actually make street improvements. And so in looking through, we kind of realized that um, in our really, on our main roads, that's where we want to encourage it the most. And so we found that if, if a property happened to not have um, completed street improvements next to it on one of our arterials. There was no way for us to require them to put that half street improvement in. And um, since arterials tend to be um, development. They're the ones that you see the most, right? And they, and they set the stage for everything that comes off of those. And so we felt it was important to require that on those developments, on those uh, collector and arterial streets.
So this would be a very similar scenario to the foothills. So the division, the subdivision we approved near the foothills area where we did the half street coming off of it.
Oh, no.
This is more like.
This is more like on Long Street, like on Long Street or Mountain Fur.
Okay.
Um, for example, we had a developer um, putting in some duplexes on Long Street, not far from Hawthorne.
Mm hmm.
And um, under this, under the way the code was previously written, kind of realized that nobody was ever gonna have to put in sidewalks or
Right.
herbs or anything because of the way, cuz everything was an exception. And uh, and all of the, all of the um, extension requirements required something to start it. Some, somebody, some neighboring property, either you had to be on a corner or the property next to you had to already have those things built. And so it just really restricted our ability to, to get those things uh, improved. And so we are recommending adding this provision that would hopefully spur some more, some more complete street.
That's even though it'll be patchwork.
Yeah. I mean, the idea is that if you get one starting, then you, especially in some areas, you have those non remonstrance or those development agreements that it can trigger that development uh, for, for hopefully more than just the one section. Uh, because in a lot of areas, we do have agreements in place where people are required to participate once it gets going, but they, they're not allowed, they're not required to do it on their own. And so if we can trigger that by having a uh, development be required to do it. Um, then it kind of, it's like the first domino falling and it gets the rest of the street built. Ideally, that's why it's supposed to work.
You that you do not have a development agreement.
And they, they are not required to participate. It might, it, it could possibly do that. Um, what, what I would recommend in that cases uh, is looking at how we can get cooperation there, either through a local improvement district. Um, that the parties all join or um, or some participation by the city. When it comes to collector and arterial streets, there is um, certainly a, a better argument for city participation when it comes to funding those improvements. Because those are streets that everybody uses. Um, when you have a residential street that's you know, off on the edges of things. The only people using those streets are people who live there and their guests. But if it's a collector or an arterial, then it's used more commonly by almost everybody.
So the ones that were not part of a development agreement in the beginning, as they pull permits, they would be required to.
Depending on what improvement they're, it depends on what they're doing. I mean, if they're just changing their water heater, then no, but.
But if they were doing substantial construction.
Exactly.
If the house is already there. We don't have a development agreement. That's still a little bit of a challenge.
It is.
But based on what you have just explained. If we could persuade them to have a limited improvement district. The rest of the people on this creek cannot walk in.
Can I, can you turn on your microphone?
So, yeah, turn on your microphone, please. So y- you're correct. It, it, it helps. It, it doesn't get us, it doesn't get us across the finish line, but it, it does get us closer.
Mm hmm.
It's not perfect, but it's something that we can do.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Don't want to get in a situation though, where we are forcing people who can't afford it to make a major improvement because that's, that's expensive, but.
It is. And that's one of the reasons why a local improvement district is really ideal because suppose you live in, so suppose there was, you didn't have sidewalks and there was a local improvement district for your neighborhood. And you say, well, I'm on a fixed income um, senior citizen or whatever. I don't want to be, I don't want to sell my house. I can't afford this, you know, all those things. Well, in that case, the local improvement district could still go through. And you might still get a bill, but you could work out a way to basically not pay that. And it would go as a lien on the property. And so in your lifetime, you don't have to deal with it. When you're, i- i- if you, you know, later on, if you decide to sell your home or your heirs sell your home, that's when that, that, that fee would be paid. Cuz essentially it would just sit on the property until it is changes hands.
And that would be caught in a title search.
Yeah, exactly. And, and in the meantime, you know, you're able to live comfortably in your home and have the benefit of it. And um, you know, now there are times when the city can foreclose on people for not paying off whatever they owe on that, that goes to their property. Those are circumstances where you have a lot of uh, policies that it would say, we're not doing that under these circumstances. And they'd be looking at um, you know, the, this, the person, this is personal situation of the person who owns that home.
So moving down to seventeen four two one one zero private access easement, uh, number four um, was not clear. Um, it said no more than two single family detached dwellings or two duplexes shall have their sole access to an easement. It didn't give an upper limit. Um, and per our code, any partition past three is a subdivision. And so we wanted to make that clear that easement serving two to three homes or two to three duplexes shall come comply with the provisions of residential neighborhood street. Um, and that's just the basic, just the paving width. Um, but past that easement serving for more homes or for more duplexes shall comply with the local street standards in chapter seventeen one one zero subdivision standards. Um, we did run into that a couple of times, which was what um, brought it to our attention that we needed to be a little more specific of what those ranges were for those standards.
And, and just to be clear, the, the, what the, the provisions, it's, it calls out for a residential neighborhood street is essentially um, has, it, it's really fairly basic. It just has to be a hard surface, you know, concrete or, or asphalt. And you have to have seven foot wide lanes. Um, so you're talking about a fourteen foot wide uh, shared driveway. Um, or two to three homes. And then if you go beyond that, then you have to, then you're looking at more of a street. Even if it's private, it still has to comply with the street standards.
Good.
That brings us to seventeen point four four off street parking and loading. Seventeen point four four point zero two zero scope. We modified uh, A two. We removed the text that says the construction or provision of additional floor area seating capacity or other expansion of an existing building or structure. And instead put for existing commercial, industrial or multifamily residential structures. The construction or provision of additional floor area seating capacity or other expansion of an existing building or structure. Um, so those are essentially the provisions of this chapter apply to those areas. And then we added three that it applies to um, for existing single family or duplex residences, any expansion greater than fifty percent of the floor area. Uh, comes under this proportion of the code. Then on seventeen point four four point zero eight zero, B parking spaces. Um, we changed, uh, we're recommending the change of for the compact spaces to be uh, eight feet instead of eight and a half feet in width and sixteen feet instead of eighteen feet in length.
And those are going to be for spaces that were designated as compact, painted on a crown or sign.
Right. And that's limited to twenty percent of the parking area can be that compact. Uh, and main, the main reason for that is that it really wasn't much different than the regular sized spaces. So we wanted to actually be real here about what compact would be.
Do we have anything, I guess it would be in this location, but do we have anything that specifies motorcycle parking at all? I noticed a lot more cities designating motorcycle parking in certain areas and things like that. Any kind of
We don't.
Mentions or anything for that?
I know um, uh, Michael Hall at the point, he did that because those spaces that are right there are.
By the covered area.
Yeah, they're technically, that's like the little weird O dot second. And so in order to have the parking in there and he determined when him and I were talking about it, when he did the property line adjustment, that that would be a good place for him because then you can't put big cars there and you don't have to worry about the turn lane. So that's why he decided to do it. We don't have a requirement for it. Um, he just did it because it fit well and it, you know, made the opportunity for the motorcycles there. So.
And we haven't, um, I mean, it's basically up to the property developer to do what they want when it comes to that. We haven't had any requests to be allowed to use motorcycle parking in lieu of regular parking spaces. And so that's certainly something that we could look at if that becomes more of a, more of a demand.
I just noticed that at a lot of our parking lots, there are those weird quirky spots and sometimes they call them compact spots, even though they're so tiny.
Yeah.
Probably be nicer if it was two motorcycles, but.
And frankly, two motorcycles are often gonna park in a, in a spot, even.
Yeah, they will.
Um, and they'll, they'll do it without even the line painted. So.
Yeah.
Kind of happens organically, I suppose.
Just a curiosity.
Mm hmm. That brings us to seventeen point five zero.
Seventeen five zero zero five zero L wall sign.
It's on page four of that section.
Um, wall sign, we removed, so a detached surface, a display surface attached flat. Um, attached flat was removed and we um, revised it to read directly adhered onto a building or structure.
Yeah, we wanted to cover painted on signs.
Yeah.
Um, because it just didn't make any sense that not to include those. We thought directly adhered would cover
Paint.
Paint would cover a, a board fastens, you know, all sorts of different options there.
And we move down to seventeen point five two fencing and screening. Page two, um, C hazardous materials. Number one. Uh, barbed wire is permitted on top of a six foot tall fence in non residential zones only. Um, it used to only be allowed in industrial zones, um, but criteria, there's other criteria in the code that allows it in commercial zones. Um, it still cannot go over. So we have a height, fence height requirement of seven feet. So if you're gonna do the barbed wire, then it's got to be the six foot fence with the barbed wire on top. So we still have the maximum height of seven feet.
But they're only allowed is, is specified here livestock containment and yeah. That brings us to seventeen point five six yard and lot standards. Um, we under. We under seventeen point five six point zero four zero side yard projections. We're recommending, uh, under B that chimneys, flues, belt courses, leaders, sills, pilasters, lintels. And ornamental features may project not more than two point five feet instead of one point five feet into a required side yard. Provided the chimneys and flues shall not exceed six feet in width. Um. I'm trying to remember what brought us to this. We kind of realized that one and a half feet was really not enough.
It's not deep enough.
Not deep enough for a chimney and, um, seemed to be kind of, seemed to make more sense to to extend that a foot.
The chimney is what brought that.
Yeah.
To light is just how, um, deep the chimney would be and that made it very restrictive, so.
Yeah, and a lot of houses do have two foot overhangs on the E, so.
Yeah. Brings us to seventeen point five eight land divisions. And in seventeen point five eight point zero five zero. The two, you see that change of changing non-remontant agreement to development agreement. And the same thing on the next page in, uh, B three A. Page four of that section. And is that the only, yeah, that's the only thing in that section.
Seventeen point six six manufactured homes on individual lots. Um, oops. Sorry. Um, we have in seventeen six six oh two oh general standards. We have under E, um, we remove purposes and the last sentence manufactured home. Shall not be occupied unless connected to local water sewer and electrical systems.
It's just a random word that somehow got left in there. I don't, it didn't make any sense, so. Delete.
And seventeen point seven zero residential accessory structures. Um, in page one A.
Wait, we need to correct, that's numbered wrong. It says A A. That should be B.
Okay.
So there's another.
Okay.
There's another correction.
So, um, when we're approving these, we need to correct. That to say B and then the next one just, oh, that one does say C. So that would have been something I just missed. Okay, so A four, we added an accessory structure shall be separated from all other structures by a minimum of six feet. This comes from our fire standards, um, and we've had it forever. We just. Didn't put it in the code and it's just something that we quote from fire, just the space between buildings. Um. Seventeen point seven two special residential dwellings. And on page two C, uh, under application requirements. Um, we needed to correct the residential medium density, um, is no longer R three, it is now R two. We corrected that. So I corrected that in, um, both locations in that, um, C one. And then this is the chapter where we added seventeen seven two, uh, four zero lot divisions for middle housing. Um, A is background, uh, Senate Bill four fifty eight was adopted by the Oregon Legislature in twenty twenty one. As a follow-up to House Bill two thousand one, which legalized middle housing in many cities throughout the state and allows lot divisions for middle housing. That enable them to be sold or owned individually. B, the purpose to allow middle housing lot divisions for any House Bill two thousand one. Middle housing types, uh, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses and cottage clusters built in accordance with ORS one nine seven seven five eight. Senate Bill four five eight only applies to middle housing land division permitted on or after June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Submental requirements, the applicant shall prepare and and submit a tentative plan for the division, including the following. One, a proposal for development of middle housing in compliance with the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. And applicable middle housing land use regulations. Two, separate utilities for each dwelling unit. Three easements, A easements shall be submitted in a form approved by the city and. Address specific issues like maintenance and repair, cost sharing, access notice, damage disputes, et cetera. B, types of easements include, I locating assessing, I guess one. Replacing and servicing all utilities. Two, pedestrian access from each dwelling unit to a private or public road. Three, any common use area or shared building elements. Four, any dedicated driveways or parking and five, any dedicated common areas. Number four, one dwelling unit per each resulting lot or parcel except common areas. And five, demonstration that the building will meet the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. And six, homeowners association information or maintenance plans if the division results in any dedicated common areas. D, additional requirements and prohibitions. One, further division of resulting lots or parcels is prohibited. Two, notation in the final plat indicating approval was provided under SB four fifty eight is required. Three, where a lot of parcel abuts. A street, street frontage improvements are required consistent with House Bill two thousand one. Uh, four, hard surface pedestrian connectivity from each unit to the sidewalk of the adjacent public or private road is required. Five, if the original parcel did not previously provide a dedication, right of way dedication is required. Six, vertical divisions shall not be allowed, um, i.e. divisions in which one or more unit of middle housing is not on the ground floor. Seven, if the proposed division results in any shared common areas, the formation of a homeowner's association to ma- maintain such areas is required. E, decision criteria, each original parcel parent lot shall satisfy the dimensional standards of the applicable zone. And, um, before I move on to clarify that, the parent lot is when you, when they originally built the, um. Duplex like in an R one zone, it had to comply with all the setback standards. And then they can divide it from there. So it's had to fit the original setback standards before they're allowed to divide it, so. Um, three, each existing dwellings and accessory structures on the original parcel parent lot. Shall comply with the setback requirements of the applicable zone, including accessory structures which have setbacks. Established by the building size. Four, adequate public facilities, including access, shall be available to serve the existing and newly created parcels if adjacent properties are undeveloped. Not developed to their maximum density or landlocked, consideration will be given to extending appropriate access to those properties in accordance with provisions. In chapter seventeen point four two and seventeen point four four. F, final plat approval. One, survey, a final survey of the approved plat shall be recorded within two years of the final decision. Failure to record a plat within that required time shall, period, shall be void the approval and require a new partitioning application. Two, final approval. The city manager shall sign the final plat if the plat substantially conforms to the approved preliminary plat. And if the conditions of approval are satisfied. Three, final plat. The final plat shall conform with the requirements of ORS chapter ninety two and applicable county survey requirements. Four, recording of approved plat, the final plat shall be recorded with Lynn County and a copy of the recorded document shall be submitted to the city. The applicant shall be responsible for all recording fees. Five, sale and development. No parcel shall be sold, transferred or signed until the final approval plat is recorded and evidence of the recording is submitted to the city. Building permit shall not be issued prior to the recording of the final plat. If the proposed structure will violate this code absent recording the partition. Six, validity, middle housing lot division approval is valid in perpetuity upon recording of the final surveyed plat. G, expedited land division. One, when an expedited land division for residential use is requested by an applicant. The city shall use the procedures for expedited land division specified under ORS one nine seven point three six five. In lieu of the procedures described in chapter seventeen point nine eight, if the application complies with the conditions and standards of ORS. One nine seven point three six zero through one nine seven point three eight zero.
All right, we're on the homestretch now. Seventeen point nine zero applications general, uh, the only correction here is on page three. Um, adding, uh, a, um. Adding the land use action being vacation and dedication of public ways. Uh, is it, uh, is going to be a type four, um, application? With, uh, staff making a recommendation to the planning commission, planning commission making a recommendation of the city council. And then the city council having final decision less appealed. And so that just essentially codifies what we. Process that we used to have and then making it fit with our current code. And then. Next up is seventeen point one zero eight non-conforming uses. And seventeen point one zero eight point zero two zero process. Adding some words here, proposed alterations of non-conforming uses. Shall submit a conditional use application, which shall be reviewed in accordance with the type three review procedures in chapter seventeen point one two six. Um, this was added because it it was really confusing the way it was written before on how it was going to be reviewed. And so this clarifies that. And then in seventeen point one zero eight point zero three zero application. Um, we spelled out there, added a conditional use application. For an alteration or expansion of a non-conforming use shall be filed with the city and accompanied by the appropriate fee. That's all of the changes we are recommending at this time. Any questions or comments or desired changes or deletions, et cetera?
I don't remember what page it was on, but it talks about professional offices. And the wording is it includes medical offices, law offices, surveys, or dimension dentists.
Oh, one of the definitions.
Right. Forget which page it was on, but. Be nice if that word was inserted.
I'm going to call personal bias on that one.
I'm retired.
I can look for it. I guess we need it for the motion, don't we?
Yeah. Professional office.
Yeah.
An office occupied by medical professionals, accountants, attorneys, architects, professional engineers or surveyors or persons engaged in similar occupations. So.
Would medical.
Does medical, a medical professional, does that not cover dentists?
Well, I can see that. You know, somebody coming in on the right day when you were all in a good mood, you could say, well, yes, that's covered under medical. Maybe you could say healthcare or, or or just add the word dentist dental offices.
You know, I was.
Medical slash.
Frankly, it it, I mean, a chiropractor could say the same thing, you know, and I'm sure this would consider a chiropractic office to be the same thing. So, uh, maybe just change medical to healthcare professional, would that?
Or a medical slash healthcare. Yeah, either or. There are also nurses who have.
Uh, right, yeah, sure, sure.
They have an office for.
I mean, pregnancy, pregnancy care centers could be considered that same thing, you know.
Yeah, pregnancy crisis.
Sure. Um, so I would, I would suggest healthcare if that is.
Okay.
Suitable to. So we'd want to include that also in your motion to make that update. And and when you make your motion, you can, if you wish, you can just say all the corrections.
As noted in.
Discuss during this, uh, meeting. And that way we can just go to the minutes and.
And look at it.
Use those. Or the recording for that matter.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Middle housing.
That sounds like it's setting up a criteria for, um.
Well.
What's the word I'm looking for?
We have. We have those, that's, uh, single family attached are what condos are, so.
This is going to allow basically anything that was allowed during the construction of that to be divided down. The common wall is just into separate lots. And this is something being handed down by the state that we're required to adopt.
And frankly, I find it kind of an odd thing to mandate, but.
It is.
We are unfortunately required to put it in, uh, given our population size.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that it really makes much difference because. If the duplex is already there, the density is already there. This just changes whether you can own it or not.
Yeah, the only thing that could affect it is if the duplex was built with a conditional use permit.
Mm hmm.
Well, and this also, so like in the R one zone, you know, you wouldn't be able to divide them. You wouldn't be able to have the small lots. It it's, um, the single family attached are not allowed in the R one zone. So this is a way that you could do something like that now in the R one zone. So it's it's allowed in all of the zones. So, um, the other zones, you are allowed to have a single family attached with the residential. So that's, it's kind of adding that back in for the middle housing for the R one. It mostly affects the R one zone is kind of, but they can do it in any of them, so.
Okay, Chair Parker, I just realized we, we went from the staff report directly into reading everything, but we didn't actually take the public comments or.
That's where I was headed next.
Officially open the.
We were still doing staff reports, so we should still be good.
Yeah, we opened it.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, all right. It's been so long.
It was, it was a while back, so, um. So at this point, we'll invite any testimony in regard to this application, um. As our applicant is the city, I would probably consider staff report as testimony from the applicant.
Sure.
So any proponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application, this would be the time to do so. As there are none, any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition of this application or legislative amendment. There are none, uh, neutral testimony, not speaking in favor or against, just wishing to be heard. As there are none, we will go ahead and pu- close the public hearing at seven thirty six. For discussion amongst the commission. We've been doing a lot of discussing. I I'm glad to see that this is still very much a living document and. We're updating and changing even simple things grammatically and. Getting things in order.
It made a big difference at the counter, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, and I I tell you, I, this, this is not a task that I want you to think that is taken lightly. This is a lot of, I won't say exciting reading because it's not. But catching all the little corrections, catching all the nothing errors, it's going to make a big difference in the long run. So thank you for that.
And there'll still be more.
Oh, yes, well.
I already.
Yeah, the more you read it, the more you'll find that. Yep, they do, changed and adopted. So if no one has any further discussion, uh, we would look for a motion in regards to our legislative amendment.
Before we make a motion, uh, let's pull our thoughts together to be sure that we can make motion correctly.
Yeah, so we'll be looking for a motion to adopt the corrections as presented by staff. With the additional corrections, um, discussed during the staff report. This evening.
Well, I I think Blair said to specifically mention seventeen point oh two six.
I I retract that. What what you could say is is a motion to a, um, to recommend. Adoption of the legislative amendment with the corrections discussed during the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, and that would probably cover everything.
I think so.
That makes it easy.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the changes as they have been described tonight. With the corrections that we have already discussed and made.
I said it. Here we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Here we go, baby di babby.
Any staff updates?
Yeah.
We have, well, all of the, um. Zone changes and redwood streets and I have to list somewhere. Um, all of the motions that went to city council in the last couple of months have been passed and approved, so. The ordinances, um, so I will be getting those uploaded, um, which means all of the city property is now public.
Oh, excellent.
Instead of residential. So, um, that does make it much easier on primarily me. But everybody else too, for development purposes. Um, we have, um. Just a couple, we have one partition and one property line adjustment. Um, oddly enough, this year has started out more, um, type three, type four applications. Than the type one and type twos, which is kind of odd. So I've had a lot that has had to go to city council, um, this year. Um, but we're still plugging along, um, still busy. Um, we are down, um, our staff engineer. Our engineer in tech, so we're filling in that space right now. Um, we also, I don't know if the last time we met Dan was here. So, um, Dan Huskins is our new building permit tech. Yeah, so we're, we're. Yeah, so we're we're plugging, we're.
A done void dream, you're live.
There is one.
Our first meeting in July, July sixth, I believe.
Yes, um.
There's one application.
It's oh, it's the variance, it's the variance for the city, um, it's a fence variance for the water treatment plant to match the fence that has been.
Right.
So I was trying to think, I was like, what was it? So, yeah.
We had our uh first pub- public advisory committee meeting for the transportation system plan. Project on Monday afternoon and Commissioner Melcher was there uh participating. Went pretty well, so excited to have that process kicked off. We're hard at work on our parks master plan update, um, that's moving forward also. And.
If.
Planning related stuff, right?
You know, any vendors or someone that makes chili or someone that likes to make pie, all of the um. Applications are open for harvest festival now. So spread the word and then we also, just to bring it up public wise, we also have had the community market now on Saturdays downtown. I almost have all of the spots that I accounted for full, so.
To be honest, I.
I haven't been here.
But we, you have you, we, I know on the vendor side, we've had more and more vendors participating every week, so I don't know about the, I assume the shoppers are there.
Uh, there's quite few people coming to go.
That's good, that's good.
Uh, there seems to be more vendors each week.
Yeah.
Lots of uh. Interesting. Crafts and. Uh, white variety, it's done.
It's good, good.
And very friendly people.
Good.
Very good.
Well, that's glad to hear it, that's.
I think this more of a, more of an occupied presence in that area is gonna be helpful.
Yes.
Get moreover along.
Yep.
Yeah, heard good things, I, this will be the first weekend, actually, I'm here, so I can actually go pick it up since we started it, so. I do things from a distance and send out maps and hope it all works, so, um, but it seems to be going well, um. Other than that, we're, like I said, we're just plugging along with.
There's a, uh, you may have heard a little bit about a downtown painting project and that is uh. Been moving pretty fast, we're still working out a lot of the details on it, but we have a corporate sponsor that has stepped in and wants to provide. Discount, severely discounted, significantly discounted paint and color um. Color consulting services, uh, design services. And they also are gonna, for any additional murals, they will provide all of the mural paint for free.
Oh.
Um, and are supporting that, and they're also building kind of a national ad campaign. Based on this, and so we're looking at at some good, uh, possibly some good coverage nationwide.
So we have crossover between murals and adhered signs. If depending on the content.
So I think, I think we uh, we, I'm fairly confident in our ability to keep them separate when it comes to what's a sign and what's a mural.
Okay.
Um, essentially, the main difference being that a sign. Um, advertises an existing and open business that is offering services. Uh, and a mural is a piece of art, the art that might depict some things, but if, you know, for example, if you. Had some old school Coca-Cola a- ad that somebody painted on a wall to make, to have, give a vintage look, that's not a sign because. It it doesn't exist in our, uh, it's not a, uh, you know, you're not gonna get it for five cents, right? You're not gonna have that, that style product anymore. I Coca-Cola is probably bad, uh, bad because the, uh, example, because it actually exists, but I'm talking about vi- vintage stuff that you can't buy.
Right, well, that wouldn't really be considered that. Be a, an office for Coca-Cola.
Right.
Would just be depicting that in.
But, but for example, if you, um, you know, if you had a donut shop and you put a big mural of a donut on the side of it, I'm sorry, that's a sign. Not a mural, um, you know.
Well, let me throw you out an example, do we have a list of people that will paint the murals?
Uh, we are working on that, so the murals will be a later stage, the initial, the initial work will be painting buildings. And then having kind of a, a base coat for where murals will be. And then we are looking for um mural artists and and volunteers, we're looking for volunteers for all of it, so.
I suggested to my successors in your laundry building.
Mm hmm.
This is what you really need on the west wall, there's a Bavarian scene with cows up on the outback.
Cows in the pasture.
Cows that, cows that we can eat.
I mean, it, it doesn't say that it's for sale or.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying that it's a, it's the meat market there and I li- I love beef, so I I I'm, I'm all for some pictures of cows.
Yeah.
They're not selling cows.
I know that.
Exactly. So there you go, now it's a mural.
That the, is that where, uh, is that?
Speedy Mart?
Speedy Mart now?
Yeah.
I painted over it and then didn't take any, take good care of their building at all.
I really enjoyed that. Thirty old details.
And I don't know if you want to make a note of this or not, but over on the old auto shop next to the former Chevron station. Is. House coming down mountain.
Yep, yep, I've actually talked with the property owner of that.
His old automobile. I refer to that often because. There's a lot of history with Andrew Wiley.
Mm hmm.
And of course, that first transcontinental auto race, so whenever we have guests. You know, we go up to the Wiley Cemetery and then we'd ride, drive back through town, I said, now, here's a mural that describes the first. Coast to coast automobile race and there's, it's quite a story.
Yeah.
I hope we don't lose that mural.
No, we're not, and in fact, I talked to the owner of that or the soon to be owner of that property. Uh, because they were applying, they wanted to apply for a grant from the city and but also wanted to be involved in this, they'd heard about the paint project and they're just on the edge of the. Of the area that we're targeting and they specifically said they want to make sure they can keep, they can uh keep the mural and possibly. Uh, refresh it kind of, uh, uh, you can see the the mortar lines and things like that in it, so maybe.
Yeah, it's.
It could use a little bit of love, um, but they, but they definitely want to keep it and, um, so we'll, we'll keep that going. But we're looking for volunteers for that and we're also looking for property owners to be involved, so um, I'll be reaching out, Henry. And.
Well, you won't, you won't want me painting any murals, I can paint a single color.
No, I I I'm not worried about the murals, I'm worried about just painting buildings itself, so we could, we could use anybody who knows their way around a brush or a sprayer or a roller or.
Competitions, aren't there?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to work out some prizes for any or whatever organization can get the most volunteer hours. Uh, you know, associated with their organization. We're trying to work out like a, a, for, you know, the most square footage painted by. You know, any group of people or something like that, trying to make it fun.
So the hours, then we could just give them all one inch brushes. Take longer.
Now, I'm thinking, uh, the idea being that, say, you get a, a, a business or something that has a whole bunch of people volunteer that are friends of that business. That all say, I want to be affiliated with this business when it comes to my volunteer time and um. And have whoever does that, regardless of where they're painting.
Right.
And at the end of the project, they they get a prize for the most volunteers contributed. And we, we, we didn't want to go with number of volunteers, is what if they only contribute an hour?
Right.
Um, you know.
Put them all in white shirts and it's the cleanest.
Or who's the dirtiest. Some of that's intentional, though. Anyway, that's all we got.
Right. So if there are no other updates or discussion, we'll go ahead and. Look to close the planning commission for June fifteenth, twenty twenty three at seven fifty.